Dollars or sham rocks?
I might have some more in my car.
My way it works.
Yeah, for sham rocks, but like.
Very impressed you kicked it.
There's a little color.
Mm-hmm. Shall we?
When we're ready. Are we ready? How do I know if we're ready?
Everybody's on board, okay?
All right.
All right, well, let's start. Welcome, everybody, to the Rye Town Council meeting of August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. I'd like a moment of silence in memory of those servicemen, United States servicemen, who fell to terrorism attacks just today, and to anyone else who was injured or killed in those attacks. Thank you. Debbie, roll call? Before we do the roll call, before we do the roll call. I know, Hope roll call. I'm looking at Debbie, not at Hope.
That's okay.
Hope, okay. Those of you watching will see that we're all wearing masks. We have adopted a new protocol in the town of Rye for public meetings. In all public meetings in the town, Town Council, Rye Town Park Commission, and any other public meeting held in a town facility, proof of vaccination will be required. And that will be checked at the door. Those not fully vaccinated will be seated in a separate area. That includes members of the boards as well as members of the public. Once provided, proof of vaccination will not be requested again unless it expires. And masks will be required of all attendees, even those who are fully vaccinated. And this is because of the severity of the Delta variant of the COVID-nineteen virus. With that, I'll announce that you'll notice that aside from Madam Clerk next to me today, Pam Jaffe is next to me, and three members of the council are attending remotely, and that has been noticed. They are officially members of the council and will be voting members, and of course can speak. So with that, Debbie, Hope, please call, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jill Axelrod.
President.
Councilperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
Councilperson Lindsay Ann Jackson.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas Nardi. Okay, and Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Here.
We hear him. We hear you, Tom. Sarah's going to assist. All right.
Sarah will fix it, okay. Adoption of minutes, the minutes held July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. May I have a motion and a second?
I so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got you. I think I seconded the motion.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
First, I would like to thank two people. First, John Zicka, who went above and beyond on behalf of the town of Rye upon the death of our caretaker, George Hogbin, a couple of months ago. John took it on himself, at our request, of course, but completely fulfilled his duties, and admirably so, traveling every night to check every single facility that the town owns, Crawford Park, Rye Town Park, the town dock, and any other place that he was requested to go. And so, John, we thank you very much. We have a new caretaker, Charlie De Leon, and he took over, we approved him last month, and he's doing an excellent job for us as well. I also want to especially thank Neva Garces for her service to the town. Neva just left us last week for her dream job. She is, I don't know if I should say it, she's, I believe, an intern and is studying, she wants to be a federal, be in federal criminal justice. And Neva, Hope, she was with us seven years?
Yes.
Seven years, and has done almost everything for the town. She worked in the court, she was ultimately Hope's deputy clerk, and did a magnificent job. She worked on outside events, and always with a cheerfulness. And we're going to miss her. She's a fantastic employee, and I know that she's going to be successful in whatever she does. So I just wanted to say that. Hope, you want to say anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
From the day I met Neva, I knew there was something really special about her, and I was so fortunate and blessed to have her as my deputy. I consider her a top performer, and she exceeded all my expectations. And I just wish her much success as she pursues her career in criminal justice. And I'm very happy for her.
She always has had big dreams, but it's always been such a pleasure to watch her, specifically working with you. The two of you made such a beautiful pair and such a beautiful team. I know that you mentored her in such a big way, but she was such an important part of our town family. We're going to miss her a lot, but we do wish her well in everything she does, and she's going to continue to shine.
And I told her she's welcome to come back anytime at all, for any reason.
Yeah, no, she's really wonderful, and it was such a pleasure to work with her for all these years. And I just want to wish her the best, and I know she'll do exceptionally well. And it's a little sad for us because we're going to miss her, but I'm also very excited for her and her new journey, so just send her my best. And then I also, in the meantime, wanted to recognize John Zicka, because not only has he been instrumental and really jumped in when we unfortunately lost George, and it was such a tragic thing, but he has been working on behalf of the town for years. He's really been extremely dedicated to the town, extremely involved, and really takes pride in helping us care for the facilities here. So I just want to thank him and recognize not just what he did in the past year, but prior to that, and moving forward.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. John, it's not surprising, just John's always right there. He jumps in, he's always there when the town needs him. He's always going up and above. So I really appreciate all he's done.
You're right, Tommy. He does, besides taking over for George in the caretaker role temporarily, he does go above and beyond in all the things that we ask him to do, including the last time delivering the ticket booth to Rye Town Park and getting it off the truck and on to the base. So, anyway, thank you to John.
Before you move on, I would like to add one other element to my thanks. And I realize as I'm speaking now, I owe so much thanks, both to John Zicka. I owe so much thanks to Neva Garces, who was truly inspiring for her passion and her commitment and her complete high caliber work performance. And there was never a time where we needed an extra hand, and she was not there with her hand open. And with regard to Mr. Zicka, I have to say the same thing, that he's always been there for us and has made sure that we knew that we could ask anything. And as a handy man, he was extraordinary. And the unsung hero is his wife, Lorma, who sends every one of his emails and receives. And I would very much like to thank Lorma for her service to the town of Rye. And she goes unrecognized so much of the time.
And that's so true, and I didn't know that. I thought John was sending those out. Okay, I've learned.
Thank you, Lorma. Thank you, Lorma.
Thank you, Lorma.
Yeah.
Our next item is a presentation, Community Solar. I know you really practice it this one year.
Hang on, let me just, quick introduction before you start going.
Introduction from Pam, I'm sorry, Pam.
No problem.
Pam, we're head of our Sustainability Committee.
You know, we're being appointed first day on the job. I can make an introduction to you, right?
Absolutely.
No, but I also want to recognize Claire Kokoska from Sustainable Westchester, who's here with us today. Sustainable Westchester, in my tenure as the chair of the Sustainability Committee, has become hugely active partner to the town of Rye. And above and beyond that, on the call with us today, if she wants to say something, is Sylvie Binder, who is basically our environmental specialist, who has been working with Sustainable Westchester to help the town achieve all these great green goals. So Claire herself has helped us get grants in the forms of grid rewards, getting community members to sign up to know when their electricity is peaking. She let us know when Community Solar was open to our community, and it's open once again. So she's going to talk a little bit about the program to get people to sign up. But she's also just been fabulous in connecting opportunities to people throughout the town of Rye. I said in the previous meeting, they offered an opportunity to Blind Brook School District, and that has come through for the school district, and they're very pleased. So thank you, Claire, for everything you've done. And tell us about Community Solar and why we should have more people sign up for it, please.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Sylvie Binder. She's been so instrumental in helping us work in the town of Rye and with so many other communities across Westchester. Thank you, Sylvie. So Community Solar is a program through Sustainable Westchester. And before I say anything about Sustainable Westchester, I just want to highlight why it's so important that we start integrating more renewable energy into our local power grid. We all feel the climate getting warmer, and summer is getting hotter, and floods happening more and more often. And part of New York State's climate goal is to reach seventy percent renewable energy by 2030. And we're not even halfway there, so there's a long way to go. As well as zero emissions by 2040, again, a long way to go, which is why we really need to develop some creative solutions to bring about more renewable energy. Sustainable Westchester and I are doing everything we can to make that possible. Sustainable Westchester is a nonprofit based in Mount Kisco, and we're made up of our member municipalities all across Westchester, including the county itself, so a total of forty-five, including the town of Rye. And our Community Solar program is particularly special because it is a way that community members, renters, homeowners, organizations, small businesses, houses of worship, even the town of Rye itself and the Blind Brook School District can participate in this program without putting solar panels on their roof or property. Basically, how it works is there is a local community solar farm built, and we have one available in the Greenberg-Elmsford area. And residents of the town of Rye can sign up for this Community Solar farm, located on a rooftop there. And the solar energy generated goes into the local power grid, which powers the local community and lets them run off of greener energy, a greener energy pool. And for your participation in the Community Solar program and that specific Community Solar farm, you would get a credit that lowers your electricity bill. So you get a credit that lowers your bill, and you pay the solar farm back for that credit and ultimately get up to ten percent off of your electricity bills each and every month. So it's an easy way to save on your electricity costs every month. It is mandated by the state that you have to save joining Community Solar, so there's that nice benefit of knowing that you will take some off of what you're paying to Con Ed every month. There's no roof needed, anyone can sign up. If you do have solar panels on your roof already or on your property, unfortunately, you're ineligible, but that's okay because we're just trying to spread the solar around. It's free to join the Community Solar program, or cancel if you ever need to. It's compatible with any electricity supplier. Some of you here or listening in might have Con Ed as your electricity supplier. Some of you might have Westchester Power or someone else of your choice. Community Solar is just a program on top of that and does not affect that in any way. And again, you're just supporting local solar energy, local renewable energy, which is so critical and important, as I mentioned. And since Sustainable Westchester started our Community Solar program in 2018, we've been able to help the county bring about five times more solar than was possible before because of this Community Solar model. And it's really exciting because it means so many more people can participate in solar. And as of now, we have two thousand people enrolled in our program, which we're very happy about. And we're hoping to very soon bring in the Blind Brook School District for savings of about fourteen thousand dollars a year. So we're really happy to bring that to the school district. And on top of that, the more people from the town.
Excuse me, Claire.
Yes.
One quick question. What about the Portchester School District? Have you spoken to them at all?
Yes, so I met with the Portchester Board a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. So they're just considering the opportunity for themselves, and they're considering it.
I do want to say.
And Rhineck?
We would love to have a connection with Rhineck. They are, they're also trying to promote Community Solar, but we have not been able to connect with them quite yet on actually.
What is connecting?
Okay, yes.
That'd be great, thank you.
I do want to say, at the end of the school year, I have some knowledge of the Blind Brook School District, our intern, our sustainability intern, Chloe Ing, made a presentation to them, along with their business director, Charles Van Hollen, who you worked with, to install solar at school. And then Claire came to the town with this opportunity, and we turned it over to the school district, and they were thrilled because it's, you know, as we discussed previously, it's all the benefits of all those solar panels without actually installing them.
Right.
So they were thrilled.
Mm-hmm, yes. And on top of the savings that we could bring, the school district and Portchester and Rhineck, once, thank you for offering to connect us with them, to just get a conversation going. The more people that sign up for Community Solar in the town of Rye, the closer we are to reaching a grant that can be awarded to the town to fund a clean energy program or initiative or project, which is also really exciting because that would be fifteen thousand dollars to be used for one of those clean energy projects or programs. And, you know, it's just pure savings on your electricity costs for anyone that joins Community Solar. And again, I keep saying this, but you're supporting local renewable energy. And the way to sign up is just to go to our website, sustainablewestchester.org/solar. And if anyone has any questions, you're welcome to contact me directly or any of the council members, and I'm happy to chat more about how to get involved in our program. My email is claire@sustainablewestchester.org, and I just thank you all so much for inviting me here and for being so involved with promoting Community Solar and expanding solar in Westchester in that way.
I have a silly question. If the school district signed up, does the town of Rye, does that go into the town of Rye's balance for number of signups?
We could do that. It would be, it would only count two, for two of the twenty-five needed signups because it has two eligible meters, but yes, that would count.
That seventy percent renewable energy in the state of New York is a real number. It's a real law. We have nine years to get there. This is a really easy way. This will take you ten minutes to sign up for. We are looking for a minimum of twenty-five homes in the entire town of Rye to sign up for this program. And I really think everyone should take the opportunity. You will save ten percent off of your bill. You have all the benefits of being solar with Sustainable Westchester really doing the legwork for you. As I said, they've been a fabulous partner. They've helped us get grants. Every time we get a grant, it comes back to the town. It comes back to making the town greener and a better place for residents to live. So, thank you, Claire.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Claire. A pleasure having you. Come back anytime, especially if you bring a check. Resolutions. First one is a resolution for an IMI with the village of Portchester for access to their fuel tanks. Debbie, you want to tell us what this is about, please?
Yes, the village of Portchester has been modernizing a number of its systems. And in this particular case, their fuel refilling depot has been modernized. And in order for the town to continue to take advantage of refueling our vehicles at the depot, we're required to enter this IMI, this intermunicipal agreement, by which our vehicles will continue to be able to access that fuel. And of course, we pay for the fuel, but it's very convenient to be able to fill up at the depot.
All right, thank you. So this is essentially to approve an IMI. Any questions? If not.
Yes, I just have a couple of quick questions. I was reading through the IMI earlier, and it refers to Appendix A, which lists the vehicles that are, were signing up. Do we have that list available?
I beg your pardon, Lindsay, I didn't realize that there needed to be a list of vehicles attached to it. We actually don't have very many. We have the white dump truck that is used mostly through the season at Rye Town Park and to a lesser extent at Crawford Park in the winter. And we have a couple of, we have a Gator and a Polaris and four golf carts.
Okay, that was actually, my next question was if we use it for the equipment as well. So, okay, thank you.
My question is, how are we going to know? We want to make sure that none of the employees are filling their cars up. How are we going to be able to determine who's filling what up and when?
I believe each vehicle has its own individual key, correct? That's key to the meter?
Okay, so there's like a box, so there's a metering device that's going to say, okay, it's the town ride truck, and it's the dump truck or whichever. So it's a device that's added to the vehicle itself, is that right?
From what I read, yes. Each vehicle has a specific key for those fuel meters.
Okay, yes, because, okay, so assume we're, okay, I understand what they're doing, okay.
Of course, we don't need to fill up our electric vehicles there.
That's correct. And also, I would say that while the vehicles are at Rye Town Park, they use the city of Rye's refueling station because it's much more convenient and closer and efficient. But when the vehicles are at Crawford, then they can take advantage of that as well.
I just find it exceptional that we have these, you know, strong intermunicipal relationships, you know, with the villages throughout the town. So, thank you for facilitating them and keeping them strong.
Don't look at me, you're, look at her.
I did look at her.
It's my pleasure, it's my pleasure.
So, motion and a second, please.
So moved.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Axelrod?
Muted. I'm sorry about that, yes.
Thank you. Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Jackson?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Next is a resolution authorizing the town of Rye Justice Court to implement a petty cash policy. And again, Debbie, I know that you have spoken with our consultant about this, who recommended it. Just go over this briefly, please.
So according to the Justice Court Fund Handbook, in order to create a petty cash account, this must be an act of the town council, that's why this is before you. And our clerks are called upon to make change on a very regular basis for the payment of fines. And without a petty cash fund, they are often pulling the money out of their own wallets in order to make change. So this is really not an acceptable situation. Therefore, we are going through the formality of not only creating the petty cash fund, but we are also adopting a policy and procedure that has been developed in consultation with our town controller and the administrative judge, as well as our consultant, our justice court consultant, to create this fund and specify how it is to be used.
Is this policy okay with you, Mr. Controller?
Yes, we agree with it, yes.
Was there a similar policy in place when the courts were held by Portchester? This seems crazy to have come out of their pockets.
I think that Portchester did have a petty cash policy that's, you know, because of volume.
But we, the town court did not?
No.
Now we do, as soon as we pass this resolution.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's capped at five hundred dollars. So there's very little exposure in terms of having funds out there.
It'll be even better when all transactions are made by credit, debit, ACH, or whatever, that no cash is involved. But as of now, we need to have cash on hand, so.
And there's a thorough accounting every night, that I read, in your documents.
Yeah, the clerk's account, and the account is a recap. If they got to replenish for any reason, they have to provide support. The administrative judge is responsible for the funds.
Thank you. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jill. Hope, please call the roll. I keep looking over there, there's no Hope there, the Hope is over here.
Councilperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Jackson?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. And the last one is a change order authorizing a proposal for an additional fire alarm device, devices for the justice court. Many people did not know that the justice court at, on three fifty North Main Street really did not have an operating fire alarm system on that floor. And so, as part of our construction, we are installing it. And you can read the, I guess, the, is Gary's letter in here somewhere or not? At any rate, it's necessary to install fire alarm devices, and the architect looked at several proposals, and this proposal by the existing contractor was the best one. And so we're going with it, saving a substantial amount of money over another proposal.
He submitted a one-sentence email about poodles.
Yeah, but I don't see it, okay.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't attach the email.
So...
But it was a good savings.
Any questions, first of all?
Yes, I, I just have a couple. First of all, this cost is $11,000. This is included in the original cost for the entire renovation, or is this an additional?
No, this is a, this is a change order. The, uh, yeah, the, another, another estimate that we got proposal was substantially in excess of $11,000. I don't remember what it was. Um, I don't, it's not in the agenda package.
It was like...
It was substantially more, and...
And I'm assuming this repair would be necessary to bring the newly renovated courtroom up to code? Is that...
Yeah, it's, it's, I think the code now requires fire alarms in public, public spaces, so...
Well...
The answer is yes.
No.
All right.
I believe, oh, sorry.
Sorry. No, it's just, the other question was, how are we going to fund it if it wasn't included necessarily in the original project scope? And the other question is, how long is our lease for the courtroom?
We are funding it through the bond that will be the subject of discussion, uh, next month, uh, when we have our, if you look on your agenda, we have a discussion of, uh, our capital budget coming up, and, um, and that will be part of that discussion, uh, as to what, what to bond, whether to go to serial bond for things, or, or, um, or issue a ban. And, uh, if, the other question you ask is how long the lease? The lease extends to the time, uh, that the court, pardon me, uh, the, I think it's two years. And, um, which, which is also the time that the lease at, uh, Grace Church Street expires, although at Grace Church Street, we have an option to renew. So decisions will have to be made in the future about that. We don't have any choice but to fix the court up at this point, um, whether we stay there or not. And hopefully, situation will pertain that we will be able to, to stay there.
The savings of that much.
Hope just pointed out, she, she drew, the, the savings on, on this over the other estimates is over $14,000. So if the savings is $14,000, then, um, this one is less than half of the other estimate. Answer your questions, Liz.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? If not, may I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the mo-
I'll make the mo- Oops.
I'll make the motion.
Want to flip a poll?
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
Who's going to second it?
I will second.
Oh, Jill.
I'll second. I'm sorry. You did.
Okay. Actually, this is working pretty well, considering. I'll, I'll make a comment about that later. Um...
Counselperson?
Call the room, please.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson?
Yeah.
Counselperson Nardi?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. Those are the resolutions for tonight, reports. Denise is not here this evening. Um, uh, I would expect that, um, she will give us a report next month about the outcome of our Board of Assessment Review proceedings. Um... Let me go to Nick, because Nick, Nick, we, we have a special, special thing going on. Nick, do you want to tell us about it? Do you want to give us a report and then tell us about your, um, your new system?
He's on mute, so I...
Nick, you have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Loud and clear.
Okay. We've been working here for quite a while now to upgrade our online payments. And I'm just going to touch base with this because we do have a, a person here from the Sturgis company that will give us a short look into the future here and just what's going to happen. But this, this will take time, but next week will be our beginning, when we will start this new system with the school builds. That will be the first ones that will go online, and we can make payments too. And I think you're going to all find it very interesting. It's much more modernized, but I will now quiet down and turn it over to Kimberly. So Kimberly, you want to take over for me?
Hi.
How are you?
Hi. Pleasure to meet you. I also have Tori, one of my colleagues, and we are going to give a brief, I promise, overview of the site that your citizens will have available to them to make online property tax payments. Any questions before I get started?
You're, go for it.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen here, so you should be seeing... Here we go. Here we go. You should be able to see it now. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Let me move this out of the way. Okay, so this is the test version, but it gives you an idea. I'm sure the background looks a little bit familiar. And I'll be giving a very brief overview of this, and then Tori will be giving a brief demo on the site that we provide for financial reporting and administrative functions. Everybody with me so far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, okay, so this here is simply a brief message that we give people the opportunity to accept usage on the site, and we are adding a little bit of very simple verbiage to get people started if they're not familiar with computers. But you'll find in the site itself, we have a lot of pop-up windows with some simple help steps. Okay, so if you look here, we have links for the, the Town of Rye and the schools, and also a link for Portche-, Village of Portchester and Village of Rybrook. So there are two main ways to use the site. I'm sure you're familiar with a reluctance to create an account. Sometimes people don't want to do that. So the good news is, you don't have to. You can simply type a name or an address. Uh, let me give you an example. You notice it's giving you prompts to help you. Maybe that was a bad example of an address. All right, let's go back to Smith. There's plenty of Smiths.
Debbie, can we get that on that screen, too?
So this is a simple search. You do not have to log in if you don't wish to, and you can see here that they have some real simple tips. And it will direct you, if you choose to create an account, which I'll show you in a moment, you can do that. But if you don't want to, we have a lot of simple search options. You can also choose to filter by year, by sequence. Basically, we're trying to give as many prompts as we can for people that want them, and if they don't want them, they don't have to use them. So here's an example here. Uh, let's say that I wanted to check and look over some of my previously paid property taxes. We have currently loaded for you 2021, 2020, and 2019. Win the option to load previous years as you think best. But this is just a quick example here of, this happens to be a paid tax. I'll show an unpaid tax in a moment. But it gives a lot of informative detail. You can look for related records. You can view and print the bill here. And here's a facsimile of a bill. You can see, too, that we have the scan line. You can save it as a PDF, send it via email to yourself or any other recipient, which people find useful. Here's a receipt option. And, uh, we are requesting your logo, so that'll be added. And let's go back here. Now, if this was one that needed to be paid, you would have a pay option. This is simply a view only. I can go back to the search, and this is very powerful. No need to log in. A quick way to go in, find your taxes, and make payments. Now, I am going to show you the login feature. We ha-, we can provide more powerful features if someone creates an account, and I'll explain why. But if you don't want to, that's fine. We have plenty of options. But let's say you do want to log in. And here, there's a brief overview. If you want the power to do auto-payments, schedule a payment, or store a payment method, obviously, you have to create an account because those things are specific to you and require some security for your own safety as a user. So let's say I choose to do that. So I'm going to the login here. Everybody with me so far? Okay. So I'm logging in here, and I already have a login set up, but there are simple instructions if you don't have a login set up. And I won't go into that, but you simply click sign up, and you can create your own login. But for brevity, I've already created one. And this is a simple login, complete test data here, and it shows that I have several. The watch list is any accounts that you're responsible for paying that you want to group together. Uh, a simple example is maybe a landlord, someone who's responsible for multiple properties, wants to do recurring payments, keep track of them easily. You can group them together in a watch list. So here, I, these are just casually grouped together. You can see that this person has several paid accounts, and then there's an unpaid. So I can view that, get the details, and I can also say, yes, I'd like to pay this. So I'm adding this to the cart, and as per your requirements, partial payments are not allowed. But I'm going into secure, secure checkout, and there are a lot of different options. I have a saved payment method here. I can choose to pay with that, or I can pay with something else. So here, I'm saying credit card, um, Jane Doe, a completely made-up credit card number, and then expiration month. Year, this is, oh, you notice here, it tells you the convenience fee. The convenience fee can vary based on the payment method chosen, but it is shown before the user agrees. So they're fully aware of the subtotals of their payment. I think I have this feeling this is going to be rejected because this is completely made-up data, but it gives you an idea. I'm clicking continue here. And I can enter a valid test card if you're curious about the full process. That's not a problem. I just know this demonstration is meant to be brief. Would you like me to enter a real credit card number so you can see the remaining page? It's a confirmation page where the user has another opportunity to confirm their payment.
No, that's okay. We've all, we've all, we've all been on those kinds of pages.
Yeah, I'm sure you are. Yes, you have. You have. Also, we have put into the site payments that have become liens. Now, these are not payable online per your requirements, but you can view a lien payment. Let me give you one example here. And if you look here, it's, it's a simple lien, and it, the data is very similar, of course, but you can see that there's no option to pay. That's because this has become a lien, and it has to be paid, uh, in person, or not, not online. But that is visible for the people that have liens so that that will show up in their online records.
I have a question. Why can't, if they have a lien and want to pay it, why can't they pay it? Why do they have to go in person?
Uh, that was the Town of Rye requirement, so I will actually go back to you. I will address that back to you.
The thing of it is that that has to be get a special release from the county.
Okay.
It can't just get a, a regular receipt. As a matter of fact, the county is changing now, and they want notarized release forms for liens. The way they do with foreclosure has now come down to any lien must be treated that way. But it's, it's a county rule.
So it's a county rule, it's not a town rule?
Correct.
Ah, forgive me. I mentioned Town of Rye, but, but Nick is the expert on the Y.
No? Okay. No, it's fine. Okay. I understand now.
Now, we want to keep this overview brief, so my thought is to ask Tori to give a brief demonstration of what we call the Financial Reporting Administration Site, unless you have further questions and you'd like to dig deeper into the payment site.
I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Very, very clean. Very nice.
Well, we're proud of our work, and we're trying to do. There are a few minor adjustments that have been asked through reviews, and we'll get those done, and we'll get this live in production for you. So Tori, do you have a couple minutes to share the financial payment and administration site? Let me make sure we didn't lose her here.
Gary, you didn't ask the Bitcoin question.
Hey, you guys hear me?
Hi, Tori.
Hi.
Let me, let me give up sharing.
I think it's showing my screen, right?
There, I can see it. I can see it.
Okay, perfect. I'm Tori. I'm with Sturgis, and so I'll quickly run through the reporting tool. I know, um, anybody that's involved with their reconciliation process, they're always pretty excited about this reporting tool. So, um, quick overview, this is going to be, the homepage is going to be in real time. Um, so you can have 2,000 payments processed in one day. Um, and where it says payments today, you, you will literally be able to see how many payments are coming in at one time. Um, so it'll have the amount paid and the amount paid yesterday. Uh, so we'll go here to payments. Here's history. So I'll just go back to the beginning of this week, and I will load the information. Um, please ignore the move money button. This is getting removed. Uh, there is no, uh, moving of money, so you don't have to worry about that. Um, so here, you will see the payment method, the payment status. So, um, obviously, it's a completed payment. Um, if it's not, there's going to be a red X. It's going to have the timestamp, the payment amount, um, the source, um, the type, the detail, year, um, and all the information surrounding the payment type, or the payment that was made. Actually, let's go here. Let's go back. Um, and you can actually, um, download all of this information. Um, you can put it on a CSV, Excel-formatted report. Um, I don't think that there is a, I know there's not, there's not a timeframe that you can look back to, so if next year you need to find a payment, um, you would be able to do the start time, July 2020 to August 2020. Um, so we don't have any time constraints on this reporting tool. Okay, so here are the totals, um, by year, by month, um, the payment source, the, sorry, the payment types that were processed. We, you know, obviously, we're not really sure if you need all this information, but we want to be as transparent as possible with the information that we're providing. Um, I, I think it's an excellent tool to have the, um, yearly transaction data in one place. And when it says exception, let me see if I can find one. These are going to be any sort of, um, reject or anything of that nature. So any kind of payment that is listed as an exception, um, that's where you're going to see that here, decline and so forth. I'm going to go back here and show you. So you can also refund payments on this portal, um, and you'll see that here. Uh, the convenience fee is going to be populated with a refund, so if I go in and I process this, um, it'll be a $26 refund because it is going to automatically refund me. So I can do that, put in a refund reason, a refund amount. Um, you put in a refund amount because you can do a partial refund. If you do a partial refund, it is not going to calculate the convenience fee, so they would not be getting their convenience fee back. Um, but the option to process a partial refund is there. So, and then I would just press refund. I'm not going to do that. Um, you can change the address. So when Kimberly showed you the, um, uh, in the website, um, you can actually change the address. Um, your customer can go in, type in a request to change their address. You're going to get notified in this reporting tool. Um, you don't have to use that feature. Um, you can approve or deny the address change. It is an option available to you. Um, and so here's where you'll see your e-alert sign up, um, and your recurring pay, auto-pay sign up. Um, and then we have the admin user. There will be one admin user. They can control, um, who has access to this reporting tool. So, you guys have any questions?
Nope. Anybody? Excellent. Looks like a great system.
It's very user-friendly, um, it's very thorough. You are gonna, I think you're really going to like, um, the fact that there's so much. You are gonna, I think you're really gonna like, um, the fact that there's so much transparency and information surrounding the, um, life cycle of a transaction. So that's always key, I think, with reconciliation. So I think you guys will really enjoy having this.
Thank you, very much appreciated. Uh, questions from the council? Nope.
Thank you, Tori. Any additional questions or concerns? Anything you'd like to see in more detail?
I think this is really, you know, the proof will be in the pudding once it goes live in September. But it, it really looks like it's a, uh, an exceptionally clean and efficient system. And I think that our users, our residents will be, uh, very much appreciative of it.
Yes, I think even us, we will take a little bit of time to get used to it. But when all's said and done, I believe it's gonna be a much better process, much more detailed, much more involved. And ultimately save time and save problems. So I'm looking forward to use, my whole office is looking forward to using it. Hopefully next week we'll kick it off and see what happens. Okay, thank you very much, Kimberly. It's been a pleasure working with you. And I'm sure we're not finished, we will still be in touch going forward. But so far, so good.
Well, since we have the implementation, we are not finished. But it's been a pleasure. If you don't need us, we'll exit and you can enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a pleasure meeting both of you.
Have a good night.
Okay, good night. Thank you, Nick. You're gonna kick the tires next week.
Yes, so if all goes well.
Anything else from you?
No, we are still waiting for Portchester's approval on their levy. So the bills are not really out there yet, but we'll get out there next week.
All right, thank you. Uh, Dave, anything from you?
I just wanted to mention that the, uh, the tax table summary is now consolidated and summarized. As you've been asking for.
Yes, I, I noticed that, Dave, thank you.
Finally, I, I got it. Anyway, uh, there's, there's, um, six new In-Ren Class of 21 properties, which is very, very low. It's usually, uh, 20 to 25. Uh, there's, there's, and so on, the In-Ren page, Schedule A is all the 2020 and prior. There's eight properties, um, for different reasons. Uh, some are, are gonna be paying off and others, they may be a close. And there's only six new In-Ren properties, which is a record for this year. So we're in very good shape on our receivables. Uh, the, Nick did file the, um, 2020 liens on July 29th, which is the earliest that's been done. Uh, and so there's been 3 million in total liens. But about 1.2 million of that is related to Doral Erwood for mostly back school taxes and, and some village taxes. So about 40% of.
I didn't see, th- those are the liens that are, um.
Just, uh, one year, uh, 2020 taxes that became lien as of.
Right, I haven't seen, I haven't seen that list yet. I've seen the, the 2019 list, which is not as extensive as it has been in the past.
Yeah, they, they caught up and they, they paid on their, on their taxes. But they, they owe school taxes. So as part of that lien, they have quite a bit of penalties accumulated on their, their back taxes as well. So, I mean, our interest in penalties, revenue for 2021 will be significantly over budget, which is a positive thing. So it will, it will have a positive revenue number for interest and penalties. Our mortgage tax number looks positive.
But we can't fi- we can't file a foreclosure on that until next year, correct?
Right, that's, that's, well, actually, that's, that's one year. So actually, that might be another year or so, I don't know.
We'll have to look, I'll have Jeff look into it.
Yeah, what the status is with the, with that property, so. But it's just, that's, that's a big component of it. So overall, we're, we're not following, um, additional liens because that is a major part of it. So overall, receivable number is very much in control. Our In-Ren property is very much in control. And that's the good news for, for.
I have one question on, on Schedule A. Why are we listing the property that we already took title to in that Schedule A? As opposed to just the properties that we have, um, proposed on?
It was an In-Ren property that, that we took possession of. So it, it gets accounted for as an In-Ren property. And we segregate it on the financial statements, uh, for receivables purpose. So it's still an In-Ren property, even though the town, town owns it. And that's, that's the back, the back taxes. Now, so if someone was to, uh, offer to buy that property from the town, any one of those, or the ones that the town is possession, then if they paid more than the back taxes, then there would be revenue. If they paid less than the back taxes, the town would put in for, for a loss on the sale of that property, so.
We, we understand, thank you very much.
Okay.
Good, that's a good report. I like it all in one place now. I look at it every, every day, David, I look at it every day. Thank you. Hope your report has been filed.
Yes.
Um, do you want to add anything?
I also included the, uh, the letter I received from the Department of State with the new, uh, numbers for the 2020 census.
Yes, we saw that. Do you want to tell us about that?
Surely. Okay, um, the increase in the number of population in the Town of Rye is 3,685. Uh, so in 2010, it was 45,928. And, and April of 210. And as of this past April of 2020, it's 49,613.
Just under 50,000. I was hoping we'd get to the 50,000 mark.
It's an increase of 8%.
But a huge amount of credit goes to the people within each of the villages.
Yes.
Who really strived and reached out to community members and had them fulfill their census reports to get us where we are right now. It's a mission. It is a mission and they've worked very hard.
Uh, Jeff, do you have the report?
Nothing.
Nothing? So that means you haven't been doing any work?
No.
Okay. I have, uh, I'll have a comment at, at the end, um.
Can we talk about charging stations?
Do we want to talk about charging stations?
Sure.
Okay. I see we have, uh, yeah, charge point usage report, okay.
She has her. Lindsay and I are always interested in charging stations. I know there's so many laptops here.
We talked about the, um, the operation of the charging stations back in December. Um, and we took a look at what type of activity we were having and what potential revenue could have been had we been charging to use the charging stations. Um, so what I've done is I've put together a report that compares what we looked at the last time, which was a six-month period of July through December of 2020. And we compared it to the most recent six-month period, which marched through this month. And, but the reports aside, we've been seeing a lot of activity outside at the stations. I mean, it's very rare now that we go out and there isn't at least one car plugged in. So if you look at, um, the, the numbers for unique drivers, by unique drivers, that means the people that are using it for the very first time. So if they used the charging station twice, they're not counted twice, it's only once. So we had 17 unique users a month. Uh, in the first six months we reported. And we are now up to 35 unique users a month. That's a really considerable, uh, increase.
Double.
Double.
Just about.
Excuse me, Camille.
Yeah.
That, that's one measure. But what about the people who do use it two, three, four, five times? Can, do you have that? I mean, it, it's one thing to say, I want to charge one time and never come back. And it's another to say, I want to charge every two days.
You know what, that's a metric we didn't look at.
But with a unique. It's key to the car. Because if I'm not mistaken from the last conversations we had, to use it, you need to enter information, correct?
Correct, we have to sign up.
You have to sign up. So a unique is not, my car has come to the station once this month. My car could have come to the station five times this month, but it's counted as one unique.
Right.
So cars could be coming over and over and over again.
That's what I'd like to know, if people are coming over and over again because that means.
The total number of uses a month, is what we're gonna say.
Yeah, and if you look at how much additional, you know, you've gone from $89 a month in utility cost to 239 within the course of the year, that's considerable, so people are.
It is. I mean, we don't have the number of actual vehicles, but in terms of the number of sessions, um, that we've had, it had been 77 sessions a month, um, for the first six months that we looked at. And now, we're up to 125 charging sessions a month. So people have found out, we have these stations here and they are using them on a regular basis now.
It's interesting, when you look at the session length though, in the next metric, that hasn't changed.
This is really, I found this to be pretty interesting. Because the first six months we looked at, it was an average of three hours and 41 minutes. Now, it's two hours and 22 minutes. But if you look at the amount of time spent charging your vehicle, it's basically the same. So two hours and seven minutes of charging time. Now, people are leaving quickly. Whereas in the past, I don't know if they left their car overnight or what. But, you know, they charged for two hours and then they left it idle there for an hour and a half.
It, it, I'm sure it has to do with the fact that more people are getting more familiar with the range of their car. And, you know, they don't have the panic of, oh my God, I have to have a full charge. I don't know how far I'm really, uh, as an electric car owner myself, I'm very, uh, I'm getting very familiar with my range. And so therefore, I don't miss going to the top at all all the time.
So is, do you think that that's a sort of an, an average for your use of two hours and seven minutes?
No, well, it depends on the fact that, you know, if you're on a supercharger, I, I just use the Tesla branded, you know, charging. So I don't go anywhere near that kind of, these superchargers and charge at home. And people might be more charging at home now. Therefore, not their need for, um, time on a charger is not great.
So in terms of the energy, um, first six months we looked at, um, we were looking at $89 worth of, of power that we were using, 742 kilowatts. Um, as opposed to now, it's $239. And we're using almost two megawatt. I don't know, MWA, mega, mer- mega?
Megawatts.
Thank you, megawatts. Um, but it is considerably, um, more than it has been in the past. And that is the estimated cost to the town.
And what's interesting is that number is going up. I've talked about this with Debbie, it's a very passive promotion. People don't necessarily know these meters are here.
Right.
So. It's interesting that it's, it's a passive discovery. As opposed to, we have a sign saying electric, you know, voltage meters here. That might drive more usage.
If you look on the map, it's, you know, it shows you where the different charging stations are. There aren't a whole lot of them around here, so.
No, we, we're one of the few. But Gary, in the last meeting, you know this more than I even have a clue, we have a Level 2 charging station versus the Tesla stations, the supercharging stations.
Right.
What is the difference?
And there's another one that Blink was talking about, which is the, I forgot the exact word, higher level than the Level 2. Not as much as the superchargers. The difference with the superchargers is, um, when you use those, you can charge at like 250 kilowatts an hour, as opposed to the Level 2, which is much less. I think, I don't remember what he quoted, 80 or something like that? It charges much faster. The, the difference is that most cars, if you don't, if you have a car other than a Tesla, you can't put a Tesla supercharger in your car because it'll destroy your, your, your battery. But other than that, there is a, a, and I don't remember, Jeff, do you know it? I, I don't remember what it is. There's a level that's not, not a, not a Tesla supercharger, but there's a level above Level 2. And frankly, that's what I think that we should be putting in. Because people, you know, if you look at this, people don't want to sit and charge their car for a really long period of time, unless you're at the park. If you're at the park, going to a soccer game, okay? And you're there for two to three hours, that's fine. You know, and you're gonna get a certain amount of charge. You're not gonna get a lot of, you'll get a certain amount of charge. But to use the Level 2 to charge it from zero to whatever your, your car can take is basically, you know, will be almost overnight, I think. Several, several hours, seven, eight hours, easy. So, you know, you, you have to figure out what, we have to figure out before we go through the next level and get more stations, we have to figure out who the customer is. Why they're gonna charge at Crawford Park as opposed to someplace else. Whether it's, um, in their home or at a different charging area. I knew, I knew somebody in Rybrook years ago when Tesla first came out. He didn't have a charger in his house. He charged at a supercharger all the time. Never charged at his house. Because at that time it was free. So, you know, it depends on what, what people are looking to do. Why, you know, they're charging at a certain place before we make a determination as to putting more charging stations in and whether we're gonna charge and how much we're gonna charge. I, I ran into, what was his name? I told you, Kim, the, uh, the French gentleman, um.
Oh, do you mean Michel Delafontaine?
Michel.
From Sustainable Westchester.
I, I ran into Michel in, in the supermarket, um, from, and we had a long talk about this. So they're, they're working on all kinds of things, especially dealing with the state legislature to bring the Con Ed charge down. Because I, I started to pull out my calculator to figure out what, what the charge per kilowatt was. The difference on the, is, is when we, when the $89 charge for 742 kilowatt hours is compared to the 239 for almost two megawatts, is that, are we getting charged the same? Per kilowatt hour? Or, or is it different as you use more?
I mean, their estimated cost to us is 12 cents per kilowatt, so.
And I believe at our last presentation, the more you used, stepped up your costs at Spark, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, uh, the, the presentation and our understanding from Blink is that the demand charge, that if we have a, um, a high kilowatt utilization month, that our, um, level of charging, our, our, our cost per kilowatt goes up for that month.
So we don't want that.
Harvey?
We don't want our costs to go up, we want our costs to go down. Yes, we do.
You're gonna have to convince me of that.
Okay. Anyway, I, I think that, uh, we've taken up enough time on my perusal through the.
No, this is very interesting because I think Lindsay and I both wanted to dive more into these numbers. No, this is very interesting because I think Lindsay and I both wanted to dive more into these numbers. So, it's appreciated.
Um, well, it's a good segue because I just want to, uh, just do a quick numbers run-through. Um, we're looking at the other municipalities in the area in terms of what they're charging. Uh, Town of Mount Pleasant is at a dollar an hour, and the Mary at two dollars an hour, City of White Plains a dollar an hour. Obviously, an average of a hundred, of one dollar and fifty cents per hour. Um, so the first six months that we looked at, we had an average, I annualized the numbers we had looked at. So, we, we had an average number of nine hundred and twenty-four sessions. Uh, average number of charging hours per year is three thousand two forty-eight. The average annual cost to the Town of Ry was a thousand sixty-eight. And the estimated revenue, if we would decide to charge using the average dollar fifty per hour, would be four thousand eight hundred and seventy-two. Compared to now, past six months, we've had an average of fifteen hundred sessions per year. Uh, average charging hours, thirty-three hundred. So that's only slightly higher than it was. And the estimated cost to the Town of Ry of twenty-eight sixty-eight. And if we annualize the potential revenue, it would be forty-nine fifty.
It feels like the energy charge is going to go up to us every year. If that makes sense. Like we, you look at the metrics and they are the same year after year. The only thing that's different here is your uniques. Your average number of charging hours is staying relatively the same. And your average estimated revenue would be the same, but our, our cost has basically almost tripled. So we would need to figure out some sort of solution that, as we said, as these costs from the providers keep scaling up to us, the more we use them, to figure.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely right. But I also refer back to what Gary was just talking about, which is that there's work going on at the legislative level to impress upon the energy suppliers, Con Ed, NIPA as well, to lower the cost of providing the electric charge to the, to the users.
Which is great considering the state of New York has that seventy percent goal that we have to achieve in the next nine years. But just want to make sure we're protecting our taxpayers' bottom lines too.
Yes, which is one of the reasons we haven't, we haven't gone forward into adding more charging stations. But it's certainly something we're looking at. Uh, and I've got a site visit set up with ChargePoint for, in the next couple of weeks, for them to take a look and give us a, a competitive proposal. Great to Blake, from all I have from Blake.
I mean, right now, if, if you're saying that right now, we're, we pay two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Is that per month?
I think it's the average per month.
Yeah, estimated number for, it's two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's not a lot of money to do that. And I think that the, that the, uh, community good in providing the electric charging station certainly is worth that. If the cost was ten thousand dollars, obviously, we wouldn't feel that way. So, I mean, we're just going to have to monitor it.
Yeah. But as I said, it's very passive. It's not like we're out there promoting saying, come to Crawford and charge up your vehicle. So this is basically people stumbling upon it. If we were to go out and promote more widely saying, this is a service, we just need to take that into effect.
Yeah, well, I mean, the balance to doing that is if we advertise the service more and people constantly used it and that drove our electric costs that high, at that point, it becomes rational to charge. And then the question is how much? I mean, we, we don't want to be in a position where we charge so much that it becomes less expensive to use gasoline.
Right.
You know, so, you know, people are going to be driven by their pocketbooks. You know, everybody would love to be energy efficient and, you know, and care for the environment. But if it comes to the point where it's going to be too expensive to do that, people are not going to.
It's all very interesting.
I will keep you posted.
I think this is very interesting. I think that this is a great dynamic. Okay?
Thank you, Camille, for working up those numbers.
Do you want us to say anything about Crawford Park while I was standing there?
Yes, I would love to.
You have something to do with Crawford Park, I think?
A little bit, just a little bit. Just spend a little bit of time here. You know, it's on my screen.
It's on your screen?
Okay. I can just walk everyone through the numbers because you have them in front of you pretty much, right?
Yes.
Um, so we continue to get a tremendous amount of leads on a regular basis. So far, year-to-date, we've had two hundred and seventy-five leads or inquiries to Red Space here. That is, we're averaging sixteen inquiries a week, which is really an incredible number. I mean, we, we've had an increase of sixty-five inquiries since I last spoke to you four weeks ago. It's really, really incredible. We have six proposals that are out right now pending. We have seventy-four active events now, but active events, I mean, they're on the books. We haven't executed them yet, but they're confirmed. Um, and then we've executed a hundred and one events to date for a total of a hundred and seventy-five. Uh, it's pretty exciting. But the number that always blows me away is the number of event days that we have. And we are up to five hundred and five event days, which is pretty spectacular. Most of that comes from, from the soccer teams and the repetitive, the yoga classes and things like that that count as, as one booking, but they have multiple days. And revenue's not doing too badly either. Um, we've received a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty-seven thousand to date in revenue. We have another seventy-five, seventy-six thousand pending. So we are right now looking at an estimated, uh, revenue booking of two hundred and thirty-two thousand. So we're still pushing for that, that quarter of a million, Gary, that we mentioned a few months ago.
What was our budgeted goal?
I don't know.
I think it was in the fifty thousand dollar range. I have to look.
I have that answer.
Oh, thank you.
So, for, just pulling out the financial report. So, for Crawford Park fees, our budgeted, um, revenue or profit was twenty-five thousand. Or no, I'm sorry, fifty thousand.
Wow.
And we are, our total surplus or profit margin, starting from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, is fifty-three thousand fourteen dollars. So that's, um, a profit, overall profit of three thousand dollars.
Did you say?
And that's what number?
The total, the total revenue was fifty thousand.
Right.
To June, we were at fifty-three already.
Oh, okay.
That's true.
Yeah, got it.
About two hundred. So we're seeing revenue by, you know, a hundred and seventy.
That, that, that must make you happy going in, going, going into budget season.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Lindsay.
The bar is going to be raised though. That's the only thing.
Yes, that's for sure.
And, and if we collect some of those big back taxes, that's going to make you even happier.
And we have also had forty-five municipal events, uh, recorded. And we've weighed the fee, um, as we all agree upon, as opposed to a hundred and forty thousand. So I think there are a lot of very grateful people in our community. Um, as far as who is using it, mostly Town of Ry residents, fifty-four percent, uh, with fifty-three percent of the revenue. Non-residents are at eighteen percent. The municipal represents sixteen percent of the bookings and nonprofit is twelve percent.
Camille, one question. Um, the municipal.
Mm-hmm.
Are those mostly Town of Ry municipalities? Or you have outside municipalities as well?
No, no, outside municipalities, we haven't had any actually. These are, a lot of them is education, um, as well as government.
Are you counting, well, the Rybrook camp, Rybrook rec is a big portion of that as well?
Correct.
And not for, nonprofits are, are those mostly Town of Ry nonprofits?
Yes. Well, I would, yes, mostly they are.
Okay. So basically, you would say of the nu, percentage of bookings, all but eighteen percent are Town of Ry bookings.
That's right. And in terms of what, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say of the breakdown of municipalities, do we know how, how often Portchester has used the facilities as well? Or?
Portchester hasn't. Um, I mean, outside of the marching band camp, which by the way, finished tonight very successfully. Um, Portchester, no, we don't have a lot of activity from Portchester. I think we may have had one teachers meeting, um, but other than that, it's mostly Rybrook.
Uh, the, uh, fire department.
Oh, fire department, police department. Sunday, we have the Portchester PVA, that's right, that'll be here for a family picnic.
And then the, are the Portchester Council for the Arts, that's nonprofit, correct?
Yes.
Versus municipal. Okay.
And they, by the way, they were very delighted that they're coming back here for the Art One Five Seven Three show. It was a very great.
Do you know, do you know when that is?
I do know. It's in October. I don't know the exact date.
Very good. We need to publicize that.
We will. I mean, I, actually, I'm meeting with them next Tuesday. They're coming. They're going to do a walkthrough. Um, they want to be very, um, COVID-aware. And I think we may even have them do some exhibits on the second floor as well, just to keep people moving.
Well, it's nice that Wes Moore came through and gave them a little love for the strip. But yes, I mean, and if I can help at all there, Camille, let me know.
And as far as what spaces are they using, it's absolutely split right down the middle between using the mansion and the pavilion and sports fields fifty-fifty in terms of, of usage. Revenue's a little different. The revenue was higher for the pavilion and the sports fields um, because they're used more frequently. But, um, no, can't complain. We are so delighted, um, with the response from the community to be at Crawford. It's really, it's very rewarding. It's very exciting. And just want to keep it going.
And you and Vic were very creative too, as far as those sporting events and making the facilities open. And, you know, I think it managed to keep a lot of those organizations.
We have, starting in September, we will have soccer activity five days a week. And on some days, it's at least two, two different groups. So, it's a lot, lot of soccer.
Do soccer, are these soccer groups, are they for-profit or nonprofit?
Uh, most of them are for, are not-for-profit. In fact, they all are.
Okay.
But they're, I mean, they're paying the nonprofit rate. So, I'm looking, Tom, I'm looking at you like you can see me. Or I can see you. I don't know. This is a little unusual, but anyway, I hope I answered your question. Any other questions?
No, great job. Thank you, Camille.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, yes. Um, I wanted to report that we have several projects that are happening. Um, we are at long last, had our, the Hillside Avenue Bridge kickoff meeting this morning. And I'm happy to report that we are quickly approaching the beginning of construction. Uh, the detour signage is up on Hillside Avenue. That's in Reinick. Um, we should have two variable message signs being delivered in the next couple of days. The bridge is expected to be closed on the two days after, right after Labor Day, September seventh. Um, and for the first several weeks, will be consumed by site prep, including tree removal, grubbing, installation of fences, denoting of the work areas. And, uh, actual demo work is, uh, hopes, hope to begin, uh, mid to late September. And the contractor estimates that the project will be complete by April twenty twenty-two. And, um, over the next several days, we should receive an FAQ from the Village of Amerinick, which is the lead agency on the project. Um, in addition to that, uh, if you recall, we, um, authorized emergency work on the Otter Creek Bridge to stabilize the northern wing walls with a, a TERS, a Temporary Earth Retaining System. That project is now nearly complete. Uh, the last piece of the project will be installing guide rails. And, um, those, uh, are in development right now. And we're expecting a, a presentation from DOF Rothfeld Engineering, AI Engineers, uh, within the next week or two. Um, the Crawford Park Trail, uh, uh, reconstruction is on track. And we are, um, uh, planning to go out to bid in early September. Uh, the timeline is that we will be publishing the RFP on Friday, September third. There'll be an optional walkthrough on Thursday, September ninth at one P M. And then the bid opening will be Friday, September seventeenth at three P M. And lastly, uh, the design work for the ball field, uh, renovation and exercise stations is underway.
True. Thank you. Very complete. Now you know what, everybody knows what's ahead of us.
I have a couple, sorry. Just, I just wanted to thank Debbie and Gary especially for all their hard work on the Hillside Avenue Bridge. This has been going on in Amerinick since we first got here to the town. Um, and you guys have done amazing job coordinating with the Town of Amerinick and the Village of Amerinick. And I, I really appreciate your efforts on behalf of that.
I just want to say that, more Debbie than me.
Yes, more Debbie. And I, I appreciate it because it's a lot of, um, back and forth and actually taking care of the community's concerns as well, which is very important. Um, I just wanted to also follow up on the Crawford pathway. I know that we had applied for grants to fund that project. Did we get the, um, were we successful in that venture? Do we know yet? Or?
Yes. Didn't we talk about this last?
Yeah, we, we.
Yeah.
We have a SAM grant, uh, a state and municipal facilities grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that Assemblyman Otis, uh, was able to secure for us. And, uh, we also put in the, uh, in our CFA application, consolidated funding application, uh, that'll be, uh, processed through state parks. We put in for additional funds for that. So that we won't hear until, um, December.
And I do believe that Debbie's also been working with Millennium to try, since there is so much ADA accessibility, to try to get grants in support of the exercise equipment and all that.
Well, yeah, well, that, that's another issue. The exercise equipment is part of our ask for the, uh, for both the CDDG and the, uh, and the CFA.
Right.
So we're, we're applying for money wherever we can apply for it.
Do we have a, um, and I appreciate that, Gary, because you've been, um, working very hard and diligently on behalf of our parks to get funding for much-needed repairs. Do we have a, um, total cost estimate for the pathway?
We will have that, um, we'll, we'll really have a good sense of it once we get the, uh, the results back from the, uh, the RFP.
Okay.
And many thanks to Steve Otis for paving the way to the path. So.
Very good, Pam. But I think Lindsay, the last estimate we had on the path itself, I think was in the two hundred thousand dollar range. Uh, but, but that was an estimate by the engineer. And as Debbie said, you never, you don't, you don't know the real cost till the bids come in.
Yeah, no, I, I understood. I just wanted to see how much we may potentially have to put in.
That'll depend on if we get grant, other grants.
Right.
The more grants we get, the less.
The better.
Tax dollars have to go in.
The less we pay.
Although one of the things that I do have in mind is, uh, when those bids come in, um, if we are going to need to borrow. if we are going to need to borrow or potentially borrow to finish that trail, we'll be able to build that into our bond or ban plan, which we will be approving at the September meeting, the borrowing.
And also, just just one thing, when it comes to these kinds of projects, you know, we we have to determine what our cost would be, but if they come in too excessive and we reject it, we also have the ability to to scale the project back. In other words, if if the trail itself comes in too high, maybe we don't do the entire trail, but the worst part at this time. And if we don't get enough money for eight exercise stations, maybe we do four exercise stations. I'm just saying, that's that's down the road. Hopefully, we'll get money to do all of it. And, you know, that's a decision for the council to make, because as always, the, you know, council may decide to do, you know, to to put more town funding in in order to get the project done. But that's a decision that's down the road, and and we don't, we don't have to decide that today.
And actually, I'm so sorry, I'm kind of jumping back and forth, but there was some discussion on Hillside Avenue. There was a pending grant with the DOT. Do we know the status on that?
Yes. The, this, we, the the grant, the additional, it's it's not quite a million dollars. Call it a million dollars, was authorized by the DOT. And shortly thereafter, it was determined that it was coming out of the wrong bucket of funds. It's more complicated than that, that's essentially what it means. And we haven't let it go. I received today the contact information for the official at the DOT with whom I'm going to try to schedule a meeting on behalf of the Town of Amerinack, the Village of Amerinack, and the Town of Rye, to talk to them and see if we can convince them that having once authorized a million-dollar grant and the funds are there and available, that they should make an exception and and re-grant the funds. But that's where we are.
Yeah, I think that's fair, but thank you very much, Debbie, for your efforts on that.
Well, we're we're going to make an effort. It's the Department of Transportation, and who knows?
Well, maybe we should call the new governor. After you talk to the Department of Transportation. We don't want to rile too many feathers at one time.
Well, we certainly, I I would think that she would ask, have you asked the Department of Transportation?
She definitely would, but then then we'd have to.